Like to call to order the Bucksport Town Council Meeting for Thursday, October 26, 2017. Road call, please. Kathy.
Here.
Here.
David K. Upson, David Keane.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Galvin.
Here.
And Robert Carmichael.
Okay, item three, presentation of any town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any. Item four, considered minutes of previous meetings. We have none tonight. Number five, receive and review correspondence and documents. We have any, Susan? Item five, new ordinances to be considered or introduced. I don't believe we have any. Moving right along here. Item seven, discussion items for managers' clarification or direction for council discussions. First one being Wilson Hall proposal. Peter, you want to... You're the one that just ran the meeting here.
Yeah. We had a finance committee meeting on a proposal that was given to us by a group to do some project with Wilson Hall. Dick Campbell, Representative Dick Campbell is part of that group, and I'd like to ask him to come up if he wouldn't mind and give us a brief overview of synopsis of what we're talking about, what you're asking the town for. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name's Dick Campbell, and we are offering a proposal from the Wilson Hall project to look into a development project for sort of end-of-life, aging-in-place healthcare facility that we're thinking would be somewhere in the 24 resident area. We do, first of all, taxable, so this money for the building instead of a nonprofit, and we're hoping to incorporate some of the community organization needs in it as well. And in terms of the group, myself, and I've been a design-build contractor that's helped with development projects from Sugarloft to Calis, Mount Desert Island, Portland, and just finished a project in Brunswick, which is similar but different. We converted a, so it was a repurposed nursing home, 44-bed nursing home, into an 18-unit residence, apartment-style kitchens, bathrooms, one- and two-bedroom units. Called the McClellan, if you have a chance to look it up on the web. Owned by a registered nurse who has gotten into the development and service business and is, acts doing quite well with it. It's a boutique, aging-in-place, so she's both going to own it, manage it, live there. And the units tend to be sort of independent units, but instead of just having a bedroom, it's a full apartment, one and two bedrooms, and the common spaces, she's sort of redefined as part of a big home, 17,000-square-foot building. And the residents have chances for a piano room and lobbies. She has a dining area that's called the pub. It's got a little bar, a lot of TVs, athletic center, small but athletic center with equipment and machines. And her philosophy is to bring active seniors in and allow that they age in place. It's a block similar to this, a block off Main Street, nice little downtown, if you know Brunswick, and in walking distance of two blocks from Hanaford, the Amtrak, a block from Fort Church is the senior center is diagonally across the street, so a lot of activity there. And we'd like to do something similar but different. As we've been searching for, or a need has been brought to us. Her concept came from, she's critical care and cardiac nurse. So in the hospital, she was finding that there were some people who just said, "Don't send me back there." And generally what happens is they go from their event to rehab and then back home. So her concept is, this is home. So if there's an event, surgery or whatever, come back and rehab here, in your home. So that's a little different than what we're doing. We've identified a significant need, and we've got, in terms of the development team, we have John Seitz, who is a retired developer out of Maryland, Virginia area outside Washington, D.C. You know, and at his peak, he was doing $80 million a year. Head roots in Maine, wants to come back to Maine. And we've been looking at projects together for a while. More recent one was a project in Bangor that, for one reason or another, didn't happen. And Jenny Cook, who is another participant, is a longtime resident of Old Town and has been interested through her family's with healthcare facilities from Maine, Virginia, and she's now in Texas with a project. And in terms of our plan, it's to develop the building and have it upscale. If you get a chance, look at the McClellan. It's very nice to walk through. And then one of the team members is an at-home healthcare provider that wants to get into a facility and do another boutique. Boutique being smaller, not large scale where you kind of get lost in it. But this McClellan is 18 units. This looks like it would be 24 residents. And we also want to make sure that, you know, what we've learned from the past, when we've tried to save the building, that the community has some interest and would like to provide community space, which is a good mix of both the purpose of the building and getting the community and activities up to the building. And...
You would ask for a six-month intent?
Yeah.
And we talked about in committee that five months, we've been asked if that would be an issue, and you agree that five wouldn't be.
Yeah. But we plan to bring our package together and present progress.
And that's what, that was the other thing we talked about, coming once a month or something and presenting progress.
Yep.
The other question I had, and it just came to me, I had to ask in the committee meeting, the state of the building as it stands.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we've heard doom and gloom, that it's going to fall down, everything like that. If we sign this, my assumption is we're not putting anything else into it, and it's there. Is that going to affect, you know, if that thing falls over?
Yeah.
You know, I know, that's what I'm saying, you know. I mean, I just, I just thought of that, that, you know, we've heard, you know, is Jeff still here?
No, Jeff, Jeff left.
What?
And I talked about that today.
Okay.
Because I asked the same thing about the roof, and Jeff said that if it wasn't that much disrepair, he would have condemned the building. He does not see the need.
So, I mean, I mean, just for, just for these folks, peace of mind in mind, if we're going into some type of agreement, that that thing's still going to be standing five months from now, and they get a chance to do it, and I'll walk over there to...
Jeff was over there yesterday after, during the rainstorm that we got. There was a little bit of water in there, but he has no concern with the building and the condition that it's in. Even if this does not fall, if this falls through, even if we were to give them a six-month, followed by two, three-month stays, that the building would still be there.
Is that your, is that your thought?
Yeah, basically concur.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, I've offered some proposals on some ceiling and have another, have been asked for the slope, the rest of the, I don't think it's a problem.
Okay.
You know, especially if Jeff, this was pretty, it was a storm.
Yeah, it's pretty good, yeah.
Yeah. I don't, it was interesting. I was looking at some of the old photographs of the Civil War when they were staging to go, and if you look at that cupola, it's got a little cant to it.
Is your intent, though, to basically bring the building back historically?
Definitely.
With a cupola on top?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, although there's been some discussion about taking the top off and using it as a gazebo maybe, or, but yeah, definitely. Keep the aesthetics of the building there.
Anybody else?
We just, you kind of referred it, but as far as keeping, maintaining the outside of the building is the historical side of it, but the interior is of course going to be considerably different. Now, with the group that you're working with, and again, not being rude, but would it make more sense to start with something like right from the ground up, or, I mean, is that, I mean, it's a lot more feat to rebuild something. I just, I'm just wondering if that...
Um, no, I've always been, the philosophy is that if there's a foundation and walls and a roof, then it's something you don't have to either tear down or build up. So, you know, everything is an asset. I think the building itself is an asset because of its historical nature, and it may even help with funding. So that offsets it all. But no, the building's in nice enough shape, so it should stay.
Okay. Any other questions from the public on this? Anything further from the council?
So what, what I would, what I would say is I want to make a resolve to enter into this agreement for a five-month period with...
Maybe two, three.
Progress coming back and a couple of three-month extensions.
Yeah.
But do the three-month extensions allow the folks, Brooks' folks to be able to go in?
Well, if we're going.
If you're going to go, the three months is going to be almost...
And you're agreeing, then it's just the natural next step.
Right, that's true. That's true.
Within five months, you're probably going to say, "Hey, we're going to look, go forward with the project." We're not going to.
Right.
If you want to go forward with the project, but you need to finish a few loose ends, we could give you the extension.
Yes. Yep.
If we feel, you know...
Yeah, we want to go ahead as a team.
Right.
One of the other things that I didn't mention was coastal enterprises. They're part of the team to help in basically two areas. One, what was exceptionally of value in the McClellan was, they have a team that creates business models, and that business model was so well-received to get three letters of commitment. And that's, that's the main piece. And they will be working with the at-home healthcare who evolves into a facility healthcare provider, as well as some funding mechanisms. They are in the business of selling tax credits. So it's the tax credit piece. In terms of the McClellan, they helped through the business model. The model went out to the banks, and there were three banks of interest, and one of them, of course, is the bank's interest and support from SBA. So SBA was involved. And then CEI had a miniscule piece, and then there was some participation by the owner, or the seller.
Yep.
Brooke, you're here now, and you had indicated in your email that five months would give you time to write for the second piece. If this wasn't successful, that it would still allow time to participate. That, that still works in terms of that?
Yeah. Just so, um, yeah, so we have been approved to apply for a $60,000 grant through the Main Community Foundation, which would go towards rehabilitation of the bell tower and the roof. It's very specific to the bell tower. It's really a grant that restores steeples in Maine, but they had given us permission to apply, even though it wasn't technically a steeple, but close enough. So that grant has a twice-a-year deadline, and the first is November 1st, which is next Wednesday, and the second is May 1st. So we just wanted to make sure the council knew that after talking with Main Community Foundation, if the council agreed to accept this preferred developer status, we were not eligible to apply next week. And of course, six months goes beyond the May 1st deadline, so we would be looking at a full 12 months. You know, it's very specific money that is not from this community and that just happens to apply to this particular sort of project that feels relevant. So we just wanted to make sure that you realized that, that this particular decision in the short term would mean we were ineligible to apply in this funding round, and then the six-month extension would mean not in May, too. So, yeah. You know, at this point, we have a $25,000 grant out there. This $60,000 grant's ready to go next week, and we've identified another $15,000. These grants are solely to basically secure the building, the bell tower and the roof. It seems like, based on the conversations that I've had with these funders and primarily Main Community Foundation, that, you know, we, we and you would be ineligible for these funds if the property was in this sort of hold status, you know, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but we just wanted to make sure you knew that. And so, yeah, the next deadline for the steeples fund is May 1st, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
The town has been collecting donations. Do we have a number on how much donations we've gotten from the local people? Not in the number of donations, but the number of donations that came from the local people that are interested in seeing the thing taken care of.
I don't have it in front of me. I'm sure we've probably got a record of it some kind of way.
Jim, Hammond has a record of it.
We have, we have a record of everybody that's donated.
Yeah.
We can get it for you.
Yeah, I just was wondering if that was information that you had in front of you at this point, you know, how many people are donating, and are they still donating rigorously, or is that, we peed it out, or how's it going?
Kathy?
Do we get donations in from now and then? Not every day, but we get some.
Generally, it doesn't seem like it's a lot of donations. Are we getting a lot of money? Are we getting thousands, or?
I don't know.
It's not, it's not thousands and thousands of dollars, Jim, that we've gotten. We've gotten small donations. We got a five, did get a $500 donation. I think that we had one that was a thousand, but the...
People that are here in town, are living here in town?
No.
Oh, I see.
But they're, come from all over.
Yeah. I have a question. You said that you thought that maybe 24 units in there?
Equal.
24 people. Okay, so it's not individual units, it's just...
The concept would be close to individual. There'll be living units in there, complete living units.
Yeah.
Within the building, but not single persons per unit.
I see. It wasn't clearly single.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any further from the council?
I've had a couple. As far as being put back on tax rule, you guys have a plan for that as far as once they're, whether they purchased it or how, because again, you, with a resolve, you give a purchase agreement, right, of a sort? I'm just wondering, tax rules and the other question I had was if, say, they decide that they want to remove the building, is there something in the agreement that we'd have that they can't just demolish the building without some kind of consent from the town, or?
They don't own it. This is, this is just an agreement for them to go and get the process. They, we still own the building, so we start a purchase agreement. It's a, it's an agreement for them to set up and go look for funding in a building per, of a purpose.
Okay.
So we still, they can't, they can't go do anything to the building until they actually come back and have this plan in place.
Yeah, I can assure that we're not interested in removing the building. The interest is in the building.
Yeah. This doesn't commit us to anything. If you come back with a project that is off the charts, and we think it's not feasible, we don't have to go in for it.
This is a team, and if, everything is mutual. If it's not of your interest, then it's your building.
Right. Yep. Any other questions?
Last one.
Questions?
One last one. And do you think that at, or I guess we're not sure yet, but your idea would be not to ask the town for money to put towards the building after the project is underway? Is that the whole goal?
Yeah. I don't know which way it's going to go.
Yeah.
But, no, our intent is to develop it ourselves and see what happens. But again, we'll, we'll be talking about all those arrangements as we go.
Okay.
You'll, you'll know as soon as we do. The business model is the first thing. The development package is, they're two different.
Yeah.
But at the same time. So what, what generally happens is you get to the end and say, "This piece isn't working, so we either move on to something different or find a way to fill the piece."
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
I don't know if that's a, did I answer your question?
That's super. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Peter, do you want to?
Yeah, can we take up an item not on the agenda?
Make a motion of that?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and take up an item not on the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Okay. What's the item?
To make a resolve that we enter into an agreement based on a five-month window with two, three-month extensions as possible, with a monthly update at our last council meeting of each month. And Susan will issue those dates, because sometimes it's the fourth and sometimes it's the fifth Thursday, because of where we are, right?
This would be resolved 2018-24?
And the purport in this contract, other than that six-month to five-month thing, I thought, felt within what you were looking for and what we were looking for.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, on the floor for a, an agreement to go into a five-month, what's it called?
A letter of intent.
A letter of intent for Wilson Hall. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? And that will be resolved 2018-24. Okay. Item B, under discussion items, Historical Society request for finance committee recommendations. Peter?
Finance committee, the other piece that we met on was a request from the Historical Society. They had a representative here that they had had a roof project that they had budgeted for, and when the project was in process, they came across some more damage that wasn't seen when they, when they had the initial project done. Pretty much emptied their coffers for what they had a grant for $8,000 to do the project of $11,000. The project actually turned out being $16,000, so it was $5,500 more than what they had planned on, and they have come to the town asking for $5,000 to help them fix that roof. Recommendation from the, from the town manager is to take the extra money that we had budgeted from last year's 225th celebration. We had given $40,000, allocated $40,000 to be spent, and we had $5,000 returned from the chamber. So the recommendation is to use that $5,000 to assist the Historical Society in meeting their obligation to fix their roof and, you know, take care of a piece of property that is on our land and has some very high historical facts in there. So recommendation from the finance committee was to go forward with that.
Any comments from the public? Yes, sir?
I just want to know how many square that building is. How many squares is that roof?
30.
30.
30 squares?
30.
And plus the sheathing on it, too, right?
It was the sheathing that put the project over. The, the company that bid on it had bid to reshingle the roof, but it was not, they discovered in the process that the sheathing was bad, and that added significantly to the cost, and that's what drove it.
Any other comments from the public, from the council? Okay, we're going to go on to agenda items. Item A being to approve, resolve 2018-23 to approve the use of $5,000 to assist in a roof replacement at the Bucksport Historical Society.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Going on to item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. I don't believe we have anything?
Yes, we do.
We do?
We have to sign the municipal election warrant.
Okay.
And we're just going to...
Licenses?
Licenses? I haven't seen any.
No licenses.
Calculator?
No.
Getting old, I can't hear for sure.
All right. While he's running upstairs, we're going to go on to item 10, approval of quitclaim deeds or discharges of deeds. I don't believe we have any. Item 11 is Town Managers Report. Susan?
Hats off to the Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce and all their volunteers who helped make the Ghostport such a big success this year. The weather was beautiful and the crowds of people were great to see. It's my understanding it's one of the biggest turnouts that we've seen. So that, that's another successful event here in Bucksport. I was asked to speak at the annual meeting of the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition on Tuesday. I was pleased to go and talk to the group. My remarks were centered around the importance of partnerships, and since the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition has been in existence for more than 20 years, it is one of the oldest partnerships that the town has and one that's responsible for many positive things in our community. Gardner Commons is the most recent entity to take advantage of the council-approved access grant program. They installed a beautiful bench outside the facility for the use of residents waiting for the bus or just enjoying the day. If you have a chance, go take a look. It was more expensive than that, but the $500 contribution for the town allowed it to occur. Heart and Soul, I encourage people to attend the upcoming Heart and Soul meetings that are to discuss the creation of visioning statements based on the stories that define what is important to the residents of Bucksport. Heart and Soul, I encourage people to attend the upcoming Heart and Soul meetings that are to discuss the creation of visioning statements based on the stories that define what is important to the residents of Bucksport from people who were interviewed. On Thursday, November 2nd, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Bucks Mills Rod and Gun Club, and the themes for that evening are recreation and the environment. Sunday, November 5th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Erie Community Building, and the themes are the local economy and small-town feel. And Thursday, November 16th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Heart and Soul Headquarters down here on Main Street, and the themes are education and vibrant downtown and infrastructure.
There's one Monday, this coming Monday, you missed.
I missed one. There's one Monday. What time, John Ball?
Ten to 12.
Ten to 12, and that is?
That's at the, that's right. It's Heart and Soul Headquarters, and it's healthy community, community spirit, diversity.
He wants to talk.
And he can.
Discussion item.
I'll wait.
Okay. And then from 8:30 to 2:00 on Thursday, November 9th, at the Alamo Theater, there's a tourism symposium. Alvin Kimball is here this evening to give some more details on that here under discussion items not on the agenda. And finally, the marina, town, and fishing docks have all been removed for the season, and that process went very smoothly this year.
On that, do they plan on removing some of those floats or are they going to lay them right where they're laying now? Seems like at the public dock, it's taking up the entire parking lot down there.
I can answer that for you. We have a cruise ship coming earlier than when the docks typically go in next year, so the docks are laid out in case we can't get the crane here when we need to. We'll find another alternative for getting them in the water. But they will be laid out until the docks go back in.
Where they are now, taking up all that?
Yeah, the bathroom, Ronnie's last day on the season is Friday, so the bathrooms down on the waterfront will all be shut down. Harborview Grill closes on Saturday, so that will be closed down as well. So in order to prepare for this cruise ship coming in early April next year, the docks needed to be laid out in the order they were because we may only be able to get a couple here or there. And if they were stacked and not in the right order, we wouldn't be able to do it.
All right. Okay, we passed around the warrant.
I'm just, that's taking up a lot of space down there. Is there some way, Rich, we can look into doing something? I mean, just put a number on them, you know, A, B, C, and stack them that way. To me, it wouldn't seem that hard to figure which order is which, you know? Can we look in?
I can talk to the crew.
Thank you.
Or can, you know, get a flatbed and take them and store them somewhere else, you know, a few of them?
How are you going to buy one?
Huh?
How are you going to buy one?
Well, that's the issue. There's no, you know, there's other activities in town other than the restaurant and the dock that, you know, some people might like to get down there and park and walk, you know? So we ought to try to stack what you can and clean up the shells and stuff that are there, too. All right. Okay, we're going on to item 12, set public hearing and hold public hearings pool of any license permits. We don't have any public hearings. We have no licenses. We'll go on to item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for the council of public. We'll open it up to the public first, and Mr. Johnson has something to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I mean, the mayor gave me permission. I know some of you have already gotten caught to these. There, just to, thank you for your comments. That was very kind. I just wanted to alert the public that our first meeting will be at 10 o'clock on Monday at the Heart and Soul Headquarters. We've been working very hard in getting all this material into the database and back out again, and there's some work, and there'll be food available. We're going to ask the public to work with us on this, and we're hoping, we really expect the council to come to, members of the council to come to at least one of these meetings, please. So there's enough schedule out ahead. Hopefully, you can fit that in. And for the folks at home that aren't seeing this here, if you do get the enterprise, which I suspect most of you do, on the very last page, Chris, I hope you're getting that back there, on the very last page of the Bucksport Enterprise, this material is also entered. And thank you, Don, for putting it in the Things to Do events. Thank you very much, and we're working hard and hope to give you more information very soon on some of our successes.
Thank you. Any other discussion items from the public? Yes, sir.
Well, I didn't realize we won't meet tonight on this, but I got your next meeting. I'm going to, I'm going to have my own meeting at, in Allen, so. On a solid waste disposal, fees are proposed. You know, like on the tire thing, they're going to, they're looking to go charging people with residential, a dollar a tire, commercial, $2 a tire. Well, to my knowledge, any old graduate's around there, charge for tire disposal. And they want to limit to 17-inch tire. Subaru takes a 20-inch tire now, so that's crazy. You're going to limit something, go to a diameter, not a rim size. But if you start, my concern is, if you start charging residents, this is supposed to be a disposal place for all these people. You're going to see, start seeing tires out in these camp roads and all these side roads and everywhere else because people, you know, and like I said, right now, they can grind a, your whole truck tires and all for that new grinder. So there is no tire limit size. This is an old-school grinder. And I realized when they, when they wrote this up that that new grinder wasn't in process. It's all working, been running for a couple months. So I think you ought to really look at that. And I think the five tires a week, the old, the contract, let's say, now it's 15 tires a week, which we share in town of Allen, you know, we, it's supposed to be part of this contract, which, that's a different story. Anyway, I think you really ought to look this over and regroup on this because I think you're going to see a lot of stuff you ain't going to like, want to see. That's just my comment because I'm not going to be able to make it because I have my own meetings, that next meeting you'll have. So I just want to comment on that.
Tires are the biggest issue?
The biggest issue, you know, like I said, the oils and the batteries and stuff like that, and the metal, I don't think that's a big, big issue. You know, like I said, the demolition debris, you know, get a contract, if you're a contractor, hiring roll-offs, you know, what Joe does and he's working, you know, and that's not a big deal. I mean, that's take care of itself. This tire issue, I think you're going to see something you ain't going to like.
All right.
But I think you ought to really look at it, especially the size and the amount.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Just as a note, that the ordinance regarding solid waste is what's on the next agenda. The rules and the fees are not part of that ordinance and aren't scheduled to be voted on by the council until after that initial ordinance has been approved. The whole solid waste transfer station, one that you talked about, the section that Mr. Rankin is talking about isn't in what will be voted on at the next meeting. That those policies that go along with the ordinance would be a meeting subsequent to that. So it may be that you would be able, it's not going to be at our next meeting on the 9th, but that would be, it's more likely that it would be the second meeting in November, that those rules and poli, if you remember when we talked in committee about it, the ordinance, one was an ordinance and the other two were policies that...
Were changing the fees, were taking the fees out of the ordinance.
That's because we took the fees out and the rules out. And that, those are separate things to be voted on outside of the ordinance, and that's the pieces that you're talking about. So missing that next council meeting doesn't take away your ability to have input or to attend because the items that you're concerned about won't be on the agenda that day. Okay?
So the next time the solid waste committee meets?
I will, the next time that this is reviewed, that those things are on, would be at a, at a solid waste committee meeting before council meeting, but not the 9th of November, and you'll be notified of that.
I don't remember charging residents for disposal of tires unless they were over 17.
They don't now. This is a new proposal.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't remember.
That hasn't been, that was a proposal. We haven't acted on that.
I know.
And I know that's what you were talking about, so.
Yeah.
I know you are. Good for you.
Any other discussion items from the public? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Alvin Kimball, and I need to work with Dalviest and Kendia Regional Tourism. And we're having our third annual tourism symposium here in beautiful downtown Bucksport on the 9th of November. So I'm here to invite you to attend that. It's on Thursday, 9th of November, starts at 8:30 in the morning. The last two we held at the Scudic Institute, and our idea is to move it around between Bucksport and the Penobscot River and pass McQuarrie Bay, Eastport. The next one will probably be in Natchez. So we, the board and down east Decatur Tourism, thought this would be a good opportunity to show off Bucksport. Well, to get 100 people in Bucksport in one place is, you know, in a theater, is easy to do, but to serve them lunch afterwards and keep them downtown is a challenge. So, I mean, we could have used a church or a school if schedules permitted. But anyway, we're going to be in the Alamo in the morning, and then we're going to go across the street. We thought it'd be a great chance to show off the new Lighthouse Art Center. And we're going to go to the, in the basement and have our meal down there. So it'll be a little cozy. But if we weren't in the downtown, we'd be missing the waterfront walkway, the marina, the potential the mill site has, the bridge, the observatory, Fort Knox. So we really wanted to get it downtown, and the Lighthouse Art Center is a perfect place. We hope you can come. I've got some propaganda that we publish and a personal invitation for each of you. But this is a brochure that we put out, 25,000 copies. You'll see we talk about Bucksport in it. This is a map we put out. You have some advertisers from Bucksport in it. On the back, you have your Chamber of Commerce listed. So anyway, we're for real. Right now, I think Eastport's trying to get 10 people. We've got eight signed up. Vex got three people signed up, so we're hoping we can get some folks from Bucksport. It's open to the general public, so any business or anyone in the general public that wants to come can, you can sign up online. I already told Larry that I'll help him sign up because I know he doesn't like to go over there. And I've got some of these maps if we just, I'll pass these around. But if you have any questions, call me. I'll be happy to talk to you about it. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Rich, this might be another reason to try to do something with those docks.
A lot of them in public works right now.
There's a possibility we'll be doing something tonight before, but that's still pending.
That'd be a good idea. What we need is a place smelling like... Okay, any other discussion items from the public? If not, any from the council? Okay, we'll go on to item 14, designation of topic for committee assignments and scheduling of committee meetings. Do we have any?
I'd like to ask for an ordinance committee meeting to look at the, an extended subject related to signs, specifically a policy in regard to signs that go down here at the end of the, where we put up the flags. Right now, we have a policy that's very general, and there've been some questions about how that works, and I think that perhaps a conversation...
Time to be looked at?
It's time to be looked at. So I would like to schedule that.
Do we have any other things to?
Before the next meeting?
Yeah. Well, I was thinking, do we have?
We are supposed to have streets and roads before the next meeting because that information should be back on Royal Ridge Lane.
From the DEP. From the DEP.
But there's nothing else in the ordinance.
One at 6:00 and one at 6:30.
Right, yeah. Do the streets and roads again at 6:00.
Six and the...
If they don't show them.
We can just show up at 6:30.
6:30, okay. Streets and roads at 6:00 and ordinance at 6:30. All right. Okay, we're going to go on to item 15. How would the council like to proceed?
Let's do adjourn.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Any complaints from the public? All sorts of. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.